I'll go with you to order. We'll call that a conference.
Supervisor Jones?
Here.
Supervisor David?
Yes.
Supervisor Brockworth?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris? Oh, I'm so sorry. I forgot. Supervisor Kelly? Oh, yeah. Supervisor Hertz?
Yes.
Not Supervisor Morris. Supervisor Nicky? Supervisor Renaud is in.
Here.
Supervisor Astro? Supervisor John?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Martin? Supervisor Lund? Supervisor Booth?
Here.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Dano?
Here.
Supervisor Backlund? Supervisor Canard? Supervisor Saltman? Supervisor Jacob? Supervisor Wendell? Supervisor Saltman? Supervisor Fitzgerald? Supervisor Newman? Supervisor Schultz? Supervisor Roberts?
Here.
And Supervisor Christiansen?
Here.
We have twenty-seven present and three absent.
Let's allegiance please, right?
Let's allegiance, flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
Okay. Are we supplying your convening on?
We are, Mr. Chair.
I'm going to see the motion to approve the agenda as printed.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Morris, who is the second. Supervisor Christiansen. All favor?
Aye.
Oh, there are none. This is approved. Two hundred minutes from July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Supervisor Renaud.
I'll move approval of the minutes as presented.
Second by Supervisor Morris. Any discussion of changes? There is. Say none. All favor approval of the minutes of July fourteenth, say aye.
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 Oh. There are none, the minutes are approved. Communications, President Michael Ford. And this morning committee noticed a public hearing. This morning, our committee will be meeting Thursday, August twentieth at seven P. M. Public hearing. Is there any public comment tonight for items on the agenda? Say none. We'll move on to committee reports, resolutions, and orders. This is Highway Committee, Supervisor Jacob.
Resolution number twenty-four seventeen, authorizing. Authorization for the Highway Department to enter into contract for limestone crushing. The Highway Department leases a Florida Highway debt. This is a Highway Department. Highway Department leases a Florida County Highway debt and receives limestone crushing debts from vendors every two to three years to replenish its inventory. For two thousand and twenty, the vendors were asked to provide bid numbers that include crushing several grades of limestone, including large riprap. This is. This resolution authorized the Jefferson County Highway Department to enter into contract with Bion Limestone for limestone crushing in two thousand and twenty. The Highway Committee met on July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, and recommended forwarding this resolution to the county board for approval. Whereas the executive summary is incorporated into this resolution, whereas the Highway Department has solicited bids for crushing approximately one hundred and ten thousand tons of limestone and five thousand tons of riprap. And whereas the Highway Department opened bids on July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, with the bowline resolved. And whereas Bion Limestone was the lowest responsible bidder. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Jefferson County Highway Department is authorized to enter into contract with Bion Limestone through limestone crushing in two thousand and twenty. This will note, adequate funds are available in the Highway Department budget for this contract. I move for approval of this resolution.
Second, this is Supervisor David. Any discussion? Say none, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oh. There are none. Resolution passes. Resolution twenty-two thousand and eighteen of David Jefferson County Parks Recreation Open Spaces. Oh, oh, sir. I'm sorry. Morris, Supervisor Morris. Resolution of warning contract to deal medical services. I believe that's the yellow sheet. Okay. I'm reading from the yellow sheet. This is resolution twenty-two thousand and eighteen. I've read that. Entering into a contract with Southern Health Partners to provide inmate medical services in the Jefferson County Jail. Executive summary. Jefferson County and the Jefferson County Sheriff have a fiduciary responsibility to provide medical services for those who are in custody in Jefferson County Jail. Those services are currently provided by multiple providers to include contracted medical professionals who provide pharmaceuticals and medical services, daily nursing services provided by county nurses, and mental health services provided by the Jefferson County Human Services Department. Over the last several months, the county administrator, the sheriff's office, Human Services Department, Health Department, Finance Department, and Human Resources Department considered options to better provide these services to inmates at the Jefferson County Jail. It was determined that the best practice is to provide these services through one provider for a variety of reasons. To include staffing challenges, comprehensive and transitional care under one provider, and reduce liability risk to the county. Currently, Jefferson County nursing services are not covered by the general liability policy of the county through Wisconsin Municipal Mutual Insurance Company. Because of this, the county must purchase an additional policy with limited coverage. In addition to staff's recommendation, it is also the recommendation of the county that the county outsource all inmate medical services. The quotes received include the cost of malpractice and liability insurance for the medical services provider, as well as a requirement for the provider to identify the county for medical malpractice or negligence claims by individuals. Jefferson County issued a request for both proposals, which was publicly advertised and posted on the county's website, as well as provided to medical service providers who had previously expressed interest. Three proposals were received. Proposals were reviewed by staff. It was determined that Southern Health Partners was the lowest responsible bidder. The request for proposals required all bidders to provide options for various other services to include pharmaceuticals and additional off-site care in addition to the primary medical services given provider. Funds not used during the fiscal year will be returned to the county. The county has allocated funding for these services in the two thousand and twenty budget through the use of the area of funds. The selection process included contacting the current client of Southern Health Partners to gain positive feedback as to their performance, both in inmate care and responsiveness to jail management. The sheriff's office also contacted Southern Health Partners to discuss adjustments to the cost based on the jail's daily population due to COVID, which Southern Health Partners is willing to negotiate. They anticipate its start is October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. The law enforcement committee reviewed the proposals at its meeting on August seventh, two thousand and twenty, and recommended forwarding this resolution to the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors to approve entering into a contract with Southern Health Partners to provide inmate medical services in the Jefferson County Jail. On the backside, we can see the vendors, and the whereas is in the now. Therefore, and the fiscal note. The fiscal impact of this resolution will not exceed one hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars for the remainder of the two thousand and twenty fiscal year. Adequate funds are budgeted for the twenty, for two thousand and twenty in the sheriff's department for inmate medical services. The amount of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, which includes a three percent cost increase we gave on the second year of contract, will be included in the two thousand and twenty budget. I move for adoption of resolution twenty-two thousand and eighteen. Second by Supervisor David. Any special questions? Third, Supervisor Smith.
In that year, how many people go through the jail?
Approximately. So I'll start. I'll let the chief come up here. So in our RFP, we use the call the average daily population. So our average daily population with a null business is about one hundred and seventy. That includes our county inmates, potentially state attractees that we also hold as well. So that was the basis for the numbers from the contract. Right now, we're roughly at ninety, is what we use as the number, but we expect that's going to grow as we bring back deeper and more courts of our society.
So was your question, how many are we having right now versus on an annual basis?
No, I can answer my question.
Okay. All right. Yeah, right now, we're at a daily population of approximately ninety inmates. And Southern Health Partners is willing to look at that with us in an incremental bump, and they'll reevaluate how much that goes up on an incremental bump by our average daily population as we start bringing in inmates due to the courts reopening themselves and us reestablishing our population going up based on that. Let me ask you something.
Well, the story is, yes, we have a variety of lines that occur into direct medical providing services for inmates, whether it was the public health, numbers for different jail nurses. We also currently have a contract that's filed with the sheriff's to track the budget for regular operations in the jail. We also have the L. C. S. of roughly one hundred and seventy, I would say, that provides a current contract medical provider, and we have some dollars allocated on the medical services. So we're pretty comfortable with the funds that are available as they take us to the end of the year. We also made a call that the box office, the interior, beginning this year, allocated about a hundred thousand dollars for this transition to the free for full money. So that's kind of highlighted in the back. So when we look at the pre-vendor quotes, you see N E M D, that's six hundred and forty-four thousand plus pharmaceuticals. They did not give us a full cost. That's what that pharmaceutical, other medical services have come from. ACH, their cost includes that full number, and they estimate that's eighty-four thousand, so that's built into that subpart two thousand. And then Southern Health Partners, on their base cost, like we asked for, on that six fifty-one includes sixty thousand dollars more. And note that that cool dollars, like they come back in time again, depending how often that is.
You have a question? You have a question? Say none, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh. And Mr. Morris? Sorry, since resolution authorized the location for public-private partnership for communications systems power, that was the blue sheet.
Resolution twenty-two thousand and nineteen, executive summary. Jefferson County has been working toward the development of a new P. twenty-five digital radio communication system, which was approved on December tenth, two thousand and nineteen by the county board. In the preliminary design work, it has been identified that additional and/or replacement tower sites would be needed to complete the project in the Palmyra area, Cambridge Oakland area, and tower constructed at the sheriff's office annex for communication to the sheriff's district. During the design and development phase of this project, tower locations that meet the required specifications have been identified, and initial conversations have taken place with property owners who are willing to work with the county to provide sites for tower construction. In addition, the design process has identified a suitable tower location in Johnson Creek where communications equipment can install and part of this progress. Further, there may be an opportunity to partner with a private entity, which may reduce the cost of equipment and construction of towers. At the November eleventh, two thousand and nineteen county board meeting, the county board authorized the county to apply to the responsive public service commission for a broadband grant, and also endorsed a partnership between Jefferson County and Internet Providers Networks LLC and Burtrum Communications LLC. This partnership and grant application, as discussed in the board resolution on November eleventh, envisioned a partnership of co-locating broadband systems with the P. twenty-five digital radio system to maximize the investment and provide needed broadband services to Jefferson County. Despite not receiving the broadband grant, conversation continued with Burtrum Communications LLC regarding its desire to partner with Jefferson County to build a communication tower. The idea proposed involves Burtrum Communications to put in the towers on behalf of Jefferson County based on county specifications with a cost-sharing arrangement to install county communication equipment. If the county is unable to finalize terms of a partnership agreement with Burtrum Communications and/or such an agreement would not be in the best interest of the county, Jefferson County would then be solely responsible for construction of the new communication tower. Law enforcement and emergency management committee considered this resolution added to the meeting on August seventh, two thousand and twenty, and recommended forwarding to the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors. We authorized the county administrator to, one, negotiate terms for the purchase and/or use of land to construct a communications tower at a location in Palmyra. May include negotiating a public-private partnership agreement with Burtrum Communications to share the cost of constructing a communications tower, and, number two, negotiate terms for the purchase or use of land to construct a communications tower at a location in the village of Cleveland, which may include a public-private partnership agreement with Burtrum Communications to share the cost of constructing a communications tower, and, number three, negotiate terms for Jefferson County to install communications equipment on a tower owned by Burtrum in Johnson Creek. And, number four, negotiate terms for a public-private partnership agreement with Burtrum Communications to share in the cost of constructing a tower at the sheriff's office annex site. And number five, negotiate terms with the state of Wisconsin and U. W. Whitewater for the use of U. W. Whitewater Residence Hall to install communication equipment. Okay, and so we have the two resolved statements and the fiscal note. Funds for the acquisition of tower site and construction of the towers have been included in the project budget that was outlined in the series two thousand and twenty A bond issue. Adequate bond funds exist in the capital project fund to finance the acquisition of tower sites and construction of the project specified in the original project plans. Jefferson County anticipates that additional costs initially borne by the county for modifications in scope of project plan to accomplish mutual public-private partnership goals should be realized will be recuperated through negotiations with the private entities involved. I move for adoption of resolution two-two thousand and nineteen.
Second. All right. Just a little bit first, you got it. Um, any discussion of question? Supervisor Martin?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. Um, two areas that are challenges for broadband right now include sections of town of Wakeville and section of town that we're developing. So would the proposed communications tower site cover these two areas? Thank you.
At this point in time, when we're promulgating this, this negotiation would not specifically cover those sites. Specifically, what we looked at was the alignment of the needs of the communication towers and those needs ever outlined in the broadband grant application that is aligned right now. That does not mean that we are looking tactically at those sites in part of the potential grant application all the partners are going for. It's just a matter of, we have to get these towers installed for both Palmyra area and Cambridge Oakland area for our communication system, more importantly, as a result of the opportunity to purchase part of the broadband.
You have a question? You have a question? Say none, all favor?
Aye.
Oh. None? Resolution passes. I think this is the resolution, uh, twenty-two thousand and twenty. Uh, updating Jefferson County Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, Supervisor, done.
Resolution number twenty-two thousand and twenty-one. The Jefferson County Parks Department has a history of planning for the future. Focus of Jefferson County Parks Recreation Open Space Plan is their natural resources while providing outdoor recreation. This plan includes a park, trail network, cities, villages, and hamlets. That benefits not only local residents, but also brought visitors who want to experience nature, walk and bike, and off, broken trails, and visit local status. This is the fourth Jefferson County Parks Recreation Open Space Plan that has been completed, with fire plans approved in nineteen ninety-seven, two thousand and five, and two thousand and thirteen. Jefferson County is currently in the implementation phase of the two thousand and thirteen Jefferson County Parks Recreation Open Space Plan and the National Heritage Area Plan. This resolution updates the existing Parks Recreation Open Space Plan for the purpose of identifying future county-wide recreational needs and opportunities, including potential park acquisition areas and to qualify for federal space and local grants, and funding for the development plan. The Jefferson County Parks Committee considered this resolution at its meeting on August third, and recommended forwarding this county board for adoption. Now, there are more being resolved that propose updates to the two thousand and twenty Jefferson County Parks Recreation Open Space Plan hereby adopted. Fiscal note, adoption of this plan does not commit Jefferson County to any future experience. All future projects and acquisitions will need county board approval at the time they are reopened. An updated plan is necessary to continue to qualify for state with federal grants. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second, Supervisor Christian. Any questions? Question? No, this is not. You're right, you're right behind that screen there against it.
I don't know. It's pretty big. So, yes. I want to give a small answer to the person who's involved in the competition. Using population, if the whole county. Well, on the street, you know, we make it bigger from a city building.